Folks, let's get this meeting underway for the regular meeting of council Tuesday, October the 11th, 7:00 PM. Looking for approval of the agenda, but before we do that, I understand by law, if you go down to your bottom section, nine, eight, pardon me, eight point, which, eight point two and three, if we can remove those and we'll deal with that at our next meeting. There's a bit of wording that needs to be corrected and adjusted in there. So we'll take eight, two and eight, three off. And with that, looking for approval of the amended agenda.
Move approval as amended, Your Worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation, so this is the time for members in the audience who are not on our presentation list to get up and make comment, have a word, tell us a story. We got writers of stories, but.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present a request to you. I've been in twice now to the pre-council meetings. This is regarding fence placement on 555 Ridley Drive. What has basically happened is I'm sure, I actually viewed the website and read the write-up that I'm sure will be explained to all of you. I have placed fence posts and rails on city property. They're already planted, they're already in place, and I'm just waiting to finish the fence now. Obviously, I'm now tied up trying to figure out what to do. Initially, I had placed this fence, basically after I had kids, to protect them from obviously running out onto the road. It's a pretty, Ridley Drive is a pretty busy street, especially morning times and afternoons. My wife is wanting to start a daycare up again. She's been doing childcare for 15 years and is coming back from mat leave. So obviously, I need to have some sort of protection and closed-off area for them. I have come in and presented to pre-council that there has been licenses of occupations given out previously from previous councils, and I know that obviously different council members are going to have different opinions on this. What I had found was one on Cedar Crest that is incredibly similar to my situation as this is my front yard, but it's technically my side yard if you look at the placement of my house on the property. What has been done is I've, I'm requesting about 32.4 square meters where the fence is placed. The one on Cedar Crest was actually 92.6 square meters. It's a very similar situation. Now that the posts and rails are in place, I've talked to council members as well as engineering, and it seems like the general consensus is that they don't want a blocker or an obstruction on city property. So now that I have the, I was going to do regular fence panels, I'm actually looking at something different, more like a galvanized steel fencing material in the panels. So it's, it's not obstructive at all. You can still see everything's open. It's just a blocker once again for the, for the kids. Now that the posts and rails are already in place, it is quite a lot of work for me to remove these and, or not, not the removal, but to redo the fence closer to the property line. So my request to you guys, once again, is to allow for a license of occupation for this fencing that is already in place. What I've done is I tried, I was here on, I think it was last Monday, and once again, working, you know, 10, 12 hours a day and Thanksgiving weekend, I, I had very limited time to go around to the neighborhood. I was going to get a petition signed or just a support letter, but I had explained to pre-council that I have zero opposition from any of my neighbors, and I've talked to over 15 people in the neighborhood. And once again, my house, I'm very open at my house. Most of my neighbors walk by daily. I have talks with them quite often. And the residents that I'm beside me, that I'm placing part of the fence line on our property line, he's lived there since 1972 when the house was built, and he's in full support of what I'm doing. They, they really enjoy what's being done, and the fence is definitely not a shabby-looking fence. It'll be a very nice look on the boulevard. And once again, this is just a small section of the boulevard. The rest of my property won't have any obstructions. I obviously won't do any other fencing, and I'm wanting to upgrade the whole boulevard with probably rhododendrons and Japanese maples and things like that around the whole What I'm also curious about is what can be placed on city property. So can I come in and request for certain landscape designs for the entire boulevard, which is what I'm trying to do on the corner lot? So if afterwards, if I can speak with anyone, or if anyone can let me know if I need to deal with engineering after, what I, what I can do and what I'm, what, what are you guys going to allow? What I looked at is someone that actually on pre-council mentioned that it might be an issue on the house sale itself. They say legally, it could come up as an issue as the owner thinking that that fence is on their property. I looked up through the license of occupation that you guys have, have given to me. In 11.2 on a license of occupation, the owner covenants and agrees not to sell or transfer, transfer title to the owner's property or any portion thereof without advising the purchaser or transferee of this agreement, and that this agreement shall automatically be terminated upon sale or transfer. So this is your guys' legal document that I would be signing to take full responsibility that I would have to then disclose to the next buyer. So firstly, I don't see it being an issue if I was ever to sell the house or somebody else moved in, as this document states that I have to bring that forward to the future buyer. So once again, I just, I just hope that council is open to my request. It is a bit of backbreaking work to dig a bunch of posts and holes and fill them with concrete, and now that I've got them in, I would just like to make it as nice as possible and request a license of occupation now that it is already being placed. Thank you.
And just before you go, can we get your name for the benefit of the recorder?
Spot, you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? And nobody's jumping up, so we shall move on. Mayor's message, there is, I just wanted to say that Councilor Chong and I attended the Tichamista Theatre for their very first professional function at the theatre, and I think consensus has it. It was an amazing production. It was a single person relating a multiple-layered story of Normandy and, and the Juneau Beach soldiers' arrival and demise in France. So it was, it was quite spectacular. So thanks for coming along. Anybody else? We've completed UBCM week. That was a week-long extravaganza of, of information. There, a lot of, a lot of resolutions that went through and some that didn't even get addressed yet, so we'll be seeing those come back in a forum next year. Anyone else from council? We're all good. Alrighty, so then moving on, we have a letter before us, and I forgot the deckle sitting on my desk. This came from the Green Communities Committee. It's fairly self-explanatory, folks, so I just wanted to let you know that City of Callwood has now reached Level Two Recognition Measurement, measurement, and in recognition of such, we will have electronic file logos that will be, can be applied to our paperwork and as well as a deckle that goes on our front door that lets the folks know coming to the building that we are participant of the 2015 Climate Action Community. Moving on to minutes and adoption, we have one set of minutes from September 12th to adopt.
Move adoption, Your Worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Receipt of one, two, three, four, five sets of minutes. Emergency planning, May 17th. Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues, April 21st. Planning and land use, September 6th. Protective services, June 15th. And transportation, public infrastructure, September 7th.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. We have with us this evening Chris Lynn, who is the Executive Director of the View Royal Casino, here to provide us with a presentation on what the casinos up to these days.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a responsible community partner, Great Canadian Casino prides itself on giving a bit of a report card to the municipalities that we live in and, and conduct our business in. So we, we certainly want to give you guys an update on how things were in 2015. Is that not moving forward? No. Oh, is that it now? It did, yes. There we go. Okay. All right. So View Royal Casino, who are we? We are owned and operated by our parent company, Great Canadian Casinos. Sorry, it's not moving to the slide that I'd like to see it. We do have 5,500 employees, actually it's up to 5,800 employees across Canada with 22 properties. At View Royal Casino, currently we have table games, slots and dining, and very soon going to be expanding those amenities. It is, it's just a little slow. So our industry governance, obviously being a casino, we have a lot of people watching what we're doing on a daily basis, including the overarching governing body, the Gaming Policy and Enforcement Branch. They oversee us and our partners at the British Columbia Lottery Corporation, British Columbia Lottery Corporation, works as us as business partners as well as auditing, and then us the gaming order, the gaming operators. And Great Canadian, some of, we have 10 properties across B.C. Something you might be familiar with would be River Rock and Hard Rock and both of the racetracks in Vancouver, several chances brands, and the two casinos on the island. Hey Mercy, sometimes if you hit view and then you hit slip, hit slideshow, it runs faster, like if you go right up to the top corner. Yeah. One more, yeah. So where the money goes. Lots of folks are interested in where the money goes, and, and many may be surprised that actually two-thirds of the revenue out of any casino goes back into provincial and municipal governments for, that support programs such as healthcare, education and social services. Since the opening of View Royal, the seven municipalities have shared in $57.9 million from gaming revenue. We do a lot of support at the site itself through supporting many local charities.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I am trying to be brief. Obviously, you can see some of the statistics with what View Royal does with some of their gaming revenue, and there is another program that the Gaming Policy and Enforcement Branch monitors and disperses money, and last year, the 357 charities across B.C. received $11.3 million in what's called the Gaming Grant Program. And our direct community support, we have our, our Proud Program that we are very proud of. It's proud of our people, proud of our business and proud of our communities. It encourages our employees to get out in their, in their community and volunteer. Last year, we selected a, a signature charity, which was Our Place Society, where our employees got out and supported their community events as well as raised funds for them. Last year, under the Proud Program, we invested over $2.5 million back into our communities, supporting over 3,600 charities Canada-wide. And these are some of the local charities that you'd be familiar with that we have supported last year. Our number, it said 27 up there, I'm sure it was probably tripled that. We didn't do a good job of tabulating it last year. We're on it this year, and certainly should be over 100 different charities. And our, our staff is really encouraged to get out there volunteering. If they volunteer just 40 hours a year, they, we will give them $500 for the charity of their choice, and many of our employees take us up on that offer. And our people, obviously, big site. We've done a lot of hiring and growing this year, and actually, our, our employee count is nearing 200 now. We have 37 different job positions on site, from salary, salary to hourly. Our average age is 41. There's a lot of great jobs there. 55% of our staff have been there over 10 years because they are great paying jobs. We have 28 different languages, dialects spoken at our site alone, and it's over 100 within our company. Economic impact, last year, 8.7 million dollars in goods and services purchased locally from 90 different vendors in Victoria. Capital investment, since our inception in 2001, $44.4 million, and that number is going to climb significantly with our expansion. So our property developments, as you may have seen in the news recently, we've finally come to an agreement with our partners at BCLC, and as well as gotten approval from, from View Royal to add 350 slot machines, 12 new table games. But what we're most excited about is the non-gaming amenities. Certainly overdue and certainly what this town, City of Victoria needs, we're going to be adding some new dining venues, a buffet, lounge and bar, and what a lot of folks are excited about are, is our entertainment venue, which will have up to 600 seats and it'll be multipurpose. I can't give you a complete description of it tonight, but we envision some of our acts that go to Hard Rock and River Rock, making the trip over here, as well as local community theatres and rentals for, for people locally that want to put on their own entertainment. So we think it's, it's going to be very exciting, and I think that the, the city is very excited as a whole, and it is well overdue. We're adding 42,000 square feet of entertainment space, so the building is more than doubling in its current size, all the way up to Wilford Road, and I have a quick picture for you there. You can see on the right-hand side, the new, the new portion of the building looking a little bit like an amphitheater, and the theater area is upstairs. Very excited about it, though. And we always cover our responsible gaming portion of, of this, of, of our business. We, we know that it is an area of concern with many. We do our very best every day to make sure that we are on top of every situation that we can be. As you can see, 72, on average, 72 and a half percent of people throughout the province have participated in some form of gambling, whether it's buying a scratch ticket or playing bingo or slot machines and what have you, lottery. And BCLC has spent nearly $11 million on responsible gaming and gambling activities or initiatives. The people that we're most worried about are moderate to high-risk gamblers that make up an estimated 3.3% of our British Colombians. All of our staff is trained before they can go on the floor to make sure that they recognize those people and do everything to help anybody that they see in distress. We always don't catch the signs. It's a imperfect world, but we do our very best every day, and we're, we're very diligent on that and very conscientious of it as well. And I said I'd be brief, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments from council? Councilor Day.
Thanks. I'm just curious about your lovely new theatre that you're building. Are you taking any public input on its design or?
So we are so new into the, the process here and what it's going to be. We will take some input for sure. I've, I've already met with some avid local theatre groups. They came to see me on Wednesday last week, as a matter of fact, and we, we had a coffee for about an hour, and we talked about it, and we're going to get a, a lot of opinion before we end up building the theatre portion of it, to make sure we're meeting as many of the necessities of the local groups, because what I envision is it being full most nights, something like the Port Theatre in Anima where it's moving, and it, it can be different things from comedy shows to rock bands to, to local theatre groups using the room and even conference space, because we'll be able to move the, the seats in and out. So we see a lot of different, we, we called it a multipurpose entertainment venue for a reason, because we, we don't know specifically what it is, but we know that we want to create traffic, we want to create excitement, people coming and getting to use it for many different things.
Good, thanks. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Moving on to item number six in our agenda, 6.1, Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General Provincial Update, Vancouver Island Integrated Major Crime Unit Service Delivery Project. Just a bit of an update on what's going on in Vimcu. You're going to take that one?
Oh, Your Worship, for the benefit of council, the mayor and myself have been meeting with provincial agencies and the RCMP on the Vancouver Island Integrated Major Crimes Unit. We, we currently, as a west shore community, participate in that program in the south island, but it's not extended the rest of the way up north of the Malahat. So the province is investigating, expanding that to the entire island. Right now, the, the crime unit does investigations, but the municipalities don't contribute. Where down here in the south island, we actually contribute to the major crimes unit. So this is just, the document in your agenda is just an update on where the province is at with this process, and we felt it was important for council just to get the update to know that this stuff is happening. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Next item, again, looking to our CAO on email correspondence from the Auditor General for local government in regards to audit planning for the 2017, 2018 year.
Thank you, Your Worship. The province is currently in the process of lobbying or asking CAOs around the province what they believe might be important in terms of the next phase for the AGLG to look into, and we felt it might be beneficial for council to have an opportunity to review the correspondence, and if there's any, I'm going to say hot buttons or issues that council think might be important to them, I can relay that on to the AGLG's office.
Any questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. 6.3 is a letter received from Cathy Peters, Speaker and Advocate for Addressing Human Trafficking Sexual Exploitation in B.C. I think, Councilor Day, were you going to take the lead on this one?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Cathy Peters has undertaken to write a letter to all the municipalities in British Columbia to raise awareness about the issue of human trafficking, sexual exploitation, youth and child exploitation, as well as youth porn use and addiction with civic leaders. She's been sending a number of very, very informed letters out to help raise the awareness. As most of you know, I chair the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee. I'm just going to ask staff, can we put those pictures up that are in the agenda? Oh, we can't do that? I was just trying to give you a snapshot of what we've been doing while she's looking at that. I'll just give you the information. The Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee is mandated by both federal and provincial legislation, and through that, we work with the Capital Region Action Team for Sexually Exploited Youth, who've been working on a number of initiatives. From UBCM, you'll remember the Moosehide Campaign. Also, the Fortress Foundation has recently put on a program at the University of Victoria seeking to enlist the aid of men in preventing the, the exploitation of young women. And one of the jobs that the Family Court Committee has undertaken over the last 10 years is to bring an education series free of charge to all the school districts within the Capital Regional District to provide students with some, and here they are, some slides. This is just to show you what that, that education series looks like. It's put on by Children of the, of the Street Society and, who are based out of Vancouver. And it gives kids just an idea of what exploitation looks like, what we're talking about in a very safe and unthreatening way. It's presented by Youth for Youth. And you could go to the next one, just to show you that it's nothing too scary. It's coming. What the forms of sexual exploitation are, how exploiters manage to get young people to agree to do some of the things, particularly through basic needs that are unmet, and promising them things that they would like to have, and eventually taking that vulnerable youth into a place that is no longer safe for that youth. And it gives us some ideas of what the warning signs are that families can watch out for, primarily being a big age difference between, you know, a young, young woman in this cartoon who's an older boyfriend who gives her fancy things, and then isolates her. And the number one warning sign of recruitment is really that gut feeling. So this is empowering youth to be prepared, to be able to resist some of those indicators, and for families to have some support to say that, yeah, you know, if it quacks like a duck and walks like a duck, it very well might be a duck. And this shows you some of the lifestyle changes that all come together with those previous slides. And then on that last slide, those are three pimps who have been arrested under the federal legislation in Canada. The centre, I'm not going to be able to say his name right, Mohamed Razami, was arrested in Vancouver. He had 14 girls under the age of 15 and was successfully prosecuted last year. And the two other women there are also pimps who were exploiting young, young people, and some of them are very surprising looking. They're not what you would expect a pimp to look like. So these are the type of tools that we are providing every year in conjunction with the Mobile Youth Services Team to help youth understand what's out there. And the other connection, of course, is gangs who are also out there recruiting youth, and you may remember us contributing to the Gang Prevention Coordinator at Pacific Centre Family Services Association, where we provided some bridge funding to help them while they were waiting for further government funding to be announced, and they have been successful in continuing to provide those services. So there are just a couple more examples of, of the slides that are presented to you so that everyone in the audience and around the table will understand that it's not a scary, ugly, terrible show. It's, it's pretty empowering and pretty positive. And then they go through a story, especially about online safety. That's another course that's offered through the Society of the, and if we can skip right to the very end, there are a number of resources that we make sure to let kids know about that are out there. The Crime Stoppers, the Kids Help Line, the Cyber tip, and the Need Help Now options, and How to Get in Touch with Children of the Street Society, if you want to do some, some follow-up on that. They have a great website. You can read lots more about it. So I've brought forward, to my right spot here, motion for your consideration, which I can't find right now. Thank you. So my recommendation, and I would so move, that council write a letter to Mrs. Peters noting the actions that have been taken by the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee and supporting the principles outlined in the Ten Strategies for Cities and Municipalities to Combat Exploitation and Protect Our Community. Request that the Protective Services Committee get an update from the RCMP. Protective Services, Services Committee get an update from the RCMP on our human trap exploitation training, OCtip, and HIT courses, and partnerships that reduce the possibility of human trafficking of our vulnerable youth, including Pratt and the Fortress Foundation, and the impacts of Bill C36 on our local resources, and also request an update at a future meeting from Victoria Family Court on the actions being taken by municipalities throughout the Capital Regional District, and also to facilitate training opportunities for our key staff in the fire department, building inspection, communication, public works, SPALA, and those people with feet on the ground in our communities so that we can help, um, connect the dots and ensure that everyone is fully, uh, protected.
Seconder?
Second.
Discussion, council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Thank you, Councilor Day, for that, uh, I know that the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee has been long working on this topic. Uh, moving ahead, New Business Planning and Land Use Committee, 7.1.1, recommendation for rezoning application, RZ16006 for 333 Whale Road.
Thank you, worship, a couple of exciting applications on the docket for tonight, um, before, staff have done a fantastic job in, um, providing some lengthy, uh, minutes, um, which I won't delve into, but I will, um, look at the highlights, uh, for 333 Whale Road, uh, the committee received their proposal to, uh, to amend the current comprehensive development 21, or CD21 zone, as well as to vary several sections of the zoning to permit the development of a 100-unit senior residential complex adjacent to the existing, uh, Westshore Lodge. Uh, council will note that this is a significant, a significantly different proposal than the previous two proposals that were on the site, and in fact, in 2013, there was a proposal to develop the site with a four-story commercial building, and prior to that, uh, in 2012, there was a proposal for a 40-unit condominium consisting of two four-story buildings, so in essence, third time's a charm, um, and we're pretty confident that, uh, that this sucker will, uh, indeed move forward. The zoning amendment, uh, that's being requested includes increasing the floor area ratio from 1.5 to 2.3, and it also includes a series of variances, um, from the current CD21 zone, uh, which are, uh, contained in the minutes. As the, uh, as an indication of support of the development of seniors housing in the city of Callwood, staff are recommending that council consider, one, that, uh, reducing the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund from $1,500 per unit to $500 per unit, and deleting the requirement to contribute $500 per unit to the beautification fund, that the applicant contribute instead to an additional landscaping along the Galloping Goose Regional Trail, um, uh, which is an amenity not only to the residents of the complex, but for all users of the trail. It was noted that to allow for development of the project, um, it will be necessary to remove the Gary Oaks from the site. Now that, um, you'll notice that those Gary Oaks are, are quite prominent at the front of that site, and, uh, did elicit some, some discussion, but, uh, the developer has, um, elicited, uh, an arborist, uh, who took a, a very close look at the Gary Oaks and had determined that they were, are in fair to poor condition, and so, indeed, it was recommended that some of the trees, uh, will need to be removed, and others were quite borderline at best. Um, the applicant also noted that, uh, public, uh, open house was held on April 24th at Westshore Lodge, the applicant stated that 33 of the 35 attendees actually lived in the current lodge, so were neighbors, and were very excited about the upgraded facilities, and provided very positive comments. Um, council will be happy to hear that the applicant, uh, assured us that financing has been secured, and they hope to start the project as soon as possible. Uh, the Westshore Lodge is the only seniors' living residence in Callwood, and actually has a waiting list due to large demand. Um, the rent will be affordable, having the most reasonable rates in Victoria. It was, uh, recommended, and I so move the, uh, recommendation that, uh, as in front of us, your worship, it's quite lengthy, so I won't read it out.
Thank you, we need a seconder, please? Any discussion, Councilor Day?
I just, uh, I, I need to clarify, you will see, there was a few comments from me at, at the meeting and in the minutes that, um, there were some areas of concern for me with this proposal, um, one of my areas of concern is, of course, the, the removal of the Gary Oak trees, which we had tried very hard to, uh, save the, those trees originally, and also the, the parking, uh, amendments, um, but I will be supporting the application based on, um, that I feel it's, it's very, an important need within our community to find, uh, housing for seniors, I think it will be a benefit to the existing neighbors in the Westshore Lodge, uh, that they will be in a better e-environment, and, uh, I'm hopeful that many of the, um, provisos, uh, where the development is subject to the, um, approval of the Director of Planning, uh, will present, uh, a good, um, face to the community and make it an enjoyable space to be in.
Thank you, Councilor Noll.
Uh, thank you, I have a couple of questions for staff on this one, or committee members. Uh, first, the explanation of the need for a zero setback on the east side of the building, the question is noted in the report, but the answer is not, I was wondering if somebody could explain why they needed zero setback?
The, without looking at the, I'm just trying to bring up the plans here, uh, through the chair, the, the building is being, um, co-located quite closely with the existing lodge structure, um, the idea being that, um, the, uh, properties will be, for lack of a better word, legally, um, consolidated, uh, we're not sure exactly how the property owner's gonna do that, he's stated that he's the majority strata owner of the adjacent property, but, um, uh, in any event, they want the two buildings to be quite, uh, closely situated and actually attached, so I believe that's the, the rationale.
Uh, I'm sorry, but the way I read the report, the zero setback is on the side that touches the Galloping Goose Trail, and staff said they had no problem with that because it's the Galloping Goose and not a neighbor.
Thank you, yes, I've got the plans up here, um, I believe it was the decision of the developer to locate the building, uh, that close to the Galloping Goose, to fit their pro, building program into the site along with the access road at the other side.
Thank you, second question I had is the landscape concept plan shows a retaining wall along Whale Road and apparently along the Galloping Goose as well, I'm curious as to how high and what form this retaining wall will take, given our recent experience with retaining walls has not been entirely sunny?
Through the chair, it'll, it'll be a beautiful retaining wall, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm guessing that, uh, it'll probably be a, a stone mortar wall, um, but because it'll be in our right of way or, or adjacent to it and, uh, co-developed with this site through a development permit, we'll make sure it looks, um, pretty good, seeing how it's in our, our town center.
Thank you, and this one, I guess, is, uh, again, to committee, uh, the first recommendation reduces the cost to the developer by removing affordable housing and, um, beautification funds, uh, it reduces the cost to the developer by approximately $250,000. The report stated that the developer was prepared to provide five subsidized units in exchange for this reduction, but committee did not add the requirement for affordable units or subsidized units to the recommendations, I was wondering why that had happened, if the developer had already indicated his, uh, willingness to do so.
My recollection of this discussions pertaining to this issue were that the developer was interested in a very short-term, um, privi, or waiving of, um, rents, uh, and we didn't feel as though that was, um, uh, worth cons, putting into consideration of, of, of the reduction in, um, amenity contributions.
Thank you, and the final question is, um, under the building construction, uh, recommendations, uh, proposed building be constructed to the highest level of energy conservation as indicated in, uh, CASHRAE, et cetera, standards, energy standard for buildings, um, is this a Callwood requirement, or is this just an add-on to the, uh, to the building cost?
Through the chair, the, uh, in this case, um, this, this energy requirement, um, is negotiated with the developer, uh, on the basis that we've gone on fish community plan with quite aggressive, uh, greenhouse gas emission reduction targets, um, our approach with the development community is to look for, uh, common ground in terms of, uh, steps that they're willing to take through their construction program, um, to meet, uh, these, as I said, very aggressive targets, and in this case, the developer was happy to, um, target that ASHRAE, uh, standard.
Thank you, um, I would like to propose an amendment to the, uh, to the recommendations, and that would be to remove the recommendation number one, uh, the reduction of, uh, Affordable Housing Fund and the Beautification Fund, have that portion struck from the recommendation?
Discussion?
Yes, I feel that the developer is already getting, uh, much larger floor space ratio than he would have been allowed otherwise, that's a huge benefit to him, he's got reduced, reduced parking requirements, that's a huge benefit to him, uh, he's not going to provide any rent subsidies, and having looked into the other lodge, I know how expensive it is, it might be one of the most affordable in Victoria, but it's still pretty pricey, uh, so I feel that the Affordable Housing Fund and the Beautification Fund should not be axed, uh, given the other benefits already accrued by the development.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Call the question on the amendment, all those in favor? Those opposed? Uh, fail, mo, motion fails then, back to the original motion? Any further discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Second item under planning and land use, 7.1.2, recommendation, uh, regarding development variance permit application, DVP16016 for 324 Goldstream Avenue. Councilor Libbin?
Uh, thank you, worship, this was the second exciting, uh, application we heard, and, uh, this one really is, uh, third time, that is the charm, um, committee, uh, heard from the Director of Planning, uh, on a report regarding development variance permit, uh, that was requested to facilitate the construction of affordable housing for Phases Two and Phase Three of the Wellness Centre located at 324 Goldstream Avenue. Uh, the applicant has requested, uh, a number of variances that are listed before us, your worship, uh, the applicant has indicated that a reduced parking standard is necessary to support the, uh, affordable housing, and have, uh, provided, and has provided data from the, uh, Greater Victoria Housing Society to demonstrate the parking reduction will meet average parking use found at similar developments. The applicant also wishes to relax the private amenity space to reduce the financial impacts, and to support the project effort to, uh, provide communal, community activity spaces. Furthermore, the applicant is requesting that the Panhandle lots be permitted, and that the requirements, uh, for minimal allowable highway frontage be deleted.
Seconder?
Um, we did have, uh, sorry, worship, uh, it was quite lengthy in the notes, so I was just scrolling to make sure I didn't, uh, miss anything, uh, committee did have some discussion about the parking variances, and, uh, wanted a little bit more, uh, reassurance, uh, that the, uh, variances are needed, and as is generally required, uh, in, in these types of applications, a, a parking study, uh, is, uh, is a condition to demonstrate the, the need for the parking variance, so that was one addition that was, uh, added to the recommendation. You also noticed that there was a, a request to vary the height, uh, of, of the one building, um, uh, staff have recommended, uh, at this point, not to, to grant that variance until we, uh, again, we get some, some additional, um, information in terms of, uh, impact on, on the neighborhood, so that's why you don't see it in the, uh, the actual recommendation. However, um, committee did make a recommendation that's before us, and I so move, uh, I won't read it out because it's quite lengthy.
And a seconder, please?
I will second that, but I just need some clarification, the motion that's on the floor includes the "and" regarding the building height, I just didn't hear you read it out at the very end.
I, I didn't read any of the motion out.
Oh, okay.
And, and the, the "and" basically reinforces, uh, my comments that, uh, that, that variance be denied.
Okay, as written, though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm happy with seconding the motion.
Discussion then? Councilor Martin?
Thank you, so can I just, uh, through, through the chair to staff or whoever can answer the question for me, so, assuming this passes this evening, what happens if the traffic study comes back and says something outside of what this recommendation is? How do, how does that get addressed moving forward?
Uh, your worship, if, uh, staff received a parking study, uh, that, uh, could not, um, validate the request, or was written in such a way that, um, uh, is, is recommended that, that it be to the Satisfaction Director of Planning, so if, if I felt it wasn't, um, sufficient, uh, we could ask for a, in the case, the latter case, I could ask for a third party to get involved, but if, uh, a parking consultant just simply wasn't able to, uh, recommend it, I would be bringing it back to council for, for the consideration. I, I don't really see any other alternative in, in a case where you've got a variance with a untenable condition attached to it.
Thank you, and one, one final, I, this is just me getting confused, so, uh, reading through everything, there was a motion made by, at, at committee, there was a motion moved by Cynthia, um, and then, when I flip over, I've got on the main motion as amended, so i-is, are we just approving what's on the main motion as amended, or are we approving what was the motion that was moved by Cynthia first, and then, I'm confused, just the main motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, so just the arrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Thank you, folks, uh, moving on to 7.1.3, again, it is a, um, amendment here, uh, regarding 468-474, 476 Goldstream Avenue, RZ15008, uh, council conditions prior to introduction of zoning amendment bylaw. Staff?
Thank you, worship. The staff report before you outlines a proposal to rezone three properties in the 400 block of Goldstream Avenue, the applicant is proposing to consolidate 467 and 474 Goldstream Avenue, which are currently zoned Residential One, with 468 Goldstream Avenue, which is currently zoned Comprehensive Development 19. This would be, they would be brought together under a modified CD19 zone. Together, the three properties are proposed to be the site of three buildings between six and eight stories in height, containing approximately 194 apartment units, uh, some ground floor commercial space, and a new city park to accommodate a restored historic building known as the Callwood Dairy and Cheese House. The proposal also includes a park dedication to preserve natural areas adjacent to Millstream Creek, uh, the primary purpose of this report, uh, is to summarize the responses made by the applicant to a series of requests concerning, uh, a parking study, revised plans for the Callwood Dairy Park, uh, open space, as well as slope protection and site mediation, as well as, and requiring an updated traffic, um, impact analysis being submitted. Staff have reviewed these submissions and are supportive of council giving consideration of a zoning bylaw, uh, to move this forward, which is included in the later part of tonight's agenda. Furthermore, staff recommends that a series of conditions, uh, be attached through, uh, a development agreement, um, prior to adoption of that bylaw, firstly, a submission of an environmental impact study, uh, to, uh, deal with any concerns regarding sleep, steep slope. sleep, steep slope stability and environmental impacts of development along the steep slopes at the back. Secondly, a site mediation plan and security deposit that would cover off the eventuality of, of the site being, becoming dormant partway through construction. Thirdly, that the applicant contribute one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the construction of a pedestrian crossing at Whitehead Place and Goldstream Avenue, which would include a pedestrian activated crossing light. And lastly, provision of a bike repair station, otherwise known as a bike kitchen, in a convenient and accessible location adjacent to the bike storage. That's it. Thank you.
Someone to move and secondor, so, for discussion?
Move the recommendation, Worship?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, what would trigger the contribution of the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the pedestrian crossing?
We would have to specify that within the terms of development agreement. Normally, a contribution like that would be payable at the time of either building permit issuance or the issuance of an occupancy permit. We would consult with our colleagues in engineering department to see what would make most sense. I suspect it would be issuance of a occupancy permit, being that that's when the additional traffic would be generated.
Thank you. Anything further? Counsel Martin?
Thank you. Sorry, I, I missed this, and I can't find it. Can you please explain point four again, the provision of a bike repair station? Where, where exactly is the bike locker or bike storage? And at what point is that getting built? And at what point are we anticipating that bike repair station would then be built?
The plans that, the last plans I've seen, and keeping in mind, these are conceptual, were the bike, there was bike storage in an underground area of the parking garage. I haven't spoken to the applicant or the planner that's managing the follow-up as to where, if they've chosen a location for the bike kitchen, but I, I suspect it would be in the, the underground area of the building.
So, just as a follow-up to the Chair then, so is this a public bike station, or is this just going to be for the residents?
My understanding, and certainly in the applicant, if they so choose to correct me, was that, that this would be for the, solely for the residents of the development.
Okay.
You want? Thank you.
Can I, can, just a quick follow-up? I guess I'm confused about the fact that, why, why are, why is this a staff recommendation on, on something for, for, for a very limited number of residents? Like, it, it feels like it's sort of strange to be suggesting or, or making a recommendation to build, like, because normally I would think of that as being a public thing that, that everybody has access to, so that's wonderful. But the fact that, as a council, we're mandating specifically to a specific development, a specific thing that they, an attribute they have to put in their building, it just seems odd to me. So I, I guess I'm just looking for some additional explanation on that.
Certainly, Your Worship, the provision of the bike repair station was something that was suggested by the traffic consultants in regard to the reduction in parking. And that's why it was targeted to the residents of the development, because the reduced parking numbers would impact, obviously, the residents of that development most greatly. So it, it was connected with the reduction in parking, essentially.
Counsel Day?
Thank you. I just realized, I had a question on the site remediation portion, where, trying to think what page it is on for you. It's on my page, six of twenty-four, if that helps at all. Under three point four, site remediation, it says remaining vacant dwellings will be demolished, and staff are recommending a security deposit be required to ensure that that work will be undertaken. And I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, if, if the building was rented, would it be considered vacant then? So I'm just wondering what sort of clarity we have on, on what buildings we're saying would be demolished? Are we talking about any of the old buildings that are there?
I have to confess that I'm not sure if staff has, have really thought down the road as to there being situations where there's a, a house that was occupied but slated to be demolished and then not demolished because the development didn't proceed. I suspect that the, if there were properties that, I, I can think of, I guess there's three, there's a trailer and two houses on the site right now. If the project was underway and it became dormant, it's like, there'd be likely processes that would see those buildings being vacated before the development was undertaken. And certainly, if there was a, for example, a, a problem with the financing, there would probably be a rationale on the part of the people who control the site to, to not have those properties occupied. So I think it's very low chance that, at the point in which the buildings were, you know, in the process of being converted to a development site be occupied, such that would be an issue. But certainly, we would, you know, work with the people on the ground at the time and, and not necessarily evict people unnecessarily if the city had a role to play at that stage.
Just a note to council, the bike kitchen reference is on page eight of the transportation report that was included in the package. Anything further? Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Moving into Protective Services then, seven point two point one, Recommendation Animal Control Bylaw Amendments, Animal Care Wellbeing and Amending the M T I Fines as referred from Protective Services, September twenty-first. Counsel Day?
Great, thank you very much. Just to let you all know that we had looked at amending the wording in the Animal Control Bylaw to be consistent throughout the C R D, and it was recommended to council, and I would so move that the Animal Control Bylaw fifteen thirty-three, two thousand and fourteen, Amendment Number One, and Bylaw Number sixteen fifty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and Municipal Ticket Information Bylaw Number thirteen fourteen, twenty ten, Amendment Number Six, Schedule Eleven, Bylaw Number sixteen twenty-five, two thousand and sixteen, be approved as presented and forwarded to the next meeting of council for enactment and first readings. And I understand there is a slight issue with, with some of the wording in the bylaws, so it will not be on tonight's agenda, but next, next time's agenda.
Discussion, council? Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Through you to perhaps the Director of Administration. Do the changes in this bylaw reflect the intent or address the concerns that the Callwood resident had brought up regarding rodeos and all that jazz? And was she aware that the subject was coming to Protective Services?
My understanding is that it's capturing all of the discussions that took place back in the spring, when we also had discussions with the Capital Regional District Bylaw Enforcement Manager. And all of those are captured now, using the wording from the C R D bylaw provisions, because my understanding is that what, that's what was directed. With respect to the lady who has been pushing and coaching and trying to get us to get our bylaws amended, I really can't say for sure if she was advised that it's at tonight's meeting or the Protective Services meeting. My understanding, though, is that the Bylaw Division's been in communication with her, but I really can't say if she was advised.
Thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving then into Transportation, Public Infrastructure, item number one before us here, seven point three point one, Recommendations for five 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 Ridley Drive Fence on City Property.
Thank you.
Counsel Noel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you heard in the public participation, the resident has built a fence on city property. Staff has noticed this, had construction halted and brought it to committee to see if a license of occupation would be issued. This was before committee previously, and they recommended unanimously that the city require have it removed. The applicant subsequently asked to have it brought back to committee to present more information. He did bring forward the precedence of one or two licenses of occupation the city has granted over the years. Committee discussed it and came to the conclusion that it really doesn't matter which yard the fence is on, whether it's the front yard or the side yard, the principle is private use of public land to the tune of nine hundred square feet. For your information, there is no property tax on this land because the city owns it. We're basically granting private use of public property. It's also the committee's opinion that this is a bad precedent to set, because if we grant it to one resident, who's to say the next resident along the street isn't going to want the same thing, and so on? Now, under the license of occupation, when the city needs to do any public works, the owner has to have the item removed, be it a fence, a rock wall, or a garden. Given that we have just adopted our master transportation plan and have all sorts of street changes hopefully happening, possibly in the near future, possibly not, staff's recommendation was to have the fence removed from city property. Committee considered it and unanimously consented, and the recommendation before you is that the request to allow the new fence placement on city property at five 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 Ridley Drive, and that posts and rails installed in July be removed or replaced along property line. And that was a recommendation from committee, and I would so move.
Secondor, please? Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And before we move on, the proponent did also request direction on who to see in regards to boulevard plantings and improvements. Council, I would suggest that you speak with Engineering, Mr. Yule, and get, is that the most appropriate? And parks can have an input on what is suitable for the local area there? Thank you. Item seven point three point two, City Engineer Reporting for twenty sixteen zero one Suk Road, Machosen Road, and Veterans Memorial Parkway Sewer Project.
This is the last large piece to, along with the associated pump station to complete the agreement on sewers with the upstream users group, as they were called. And these sewers have been tendered once. We received no bids. We did much better this time with a more relaxed timetable, and received nine bids, as shown in the letter attached to the report, a letter by Tetra Tech. The lowest bid being one million fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-six, and the highest being one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-one. The, the fact that there's a cluster of bids at the bottom end indicates that more than one contractor thought it was a reasonable price, which is good news. The consultants have examined the bids for errors, have checked references for the low bid, and they are a local company, C one, their references checked out, and they're believed to have the capacity to complete this job. And therefore, the recommendation is to award to the low bidder. And we've included in the report a table of what that does to the current budget for these sewers and the associated pump station. And as you can see, there's, we predict some under budget despite having quite good contingencies in both underneath C one's tender amount and built into the line saying design and construction of the pump station. This bid was, in fact, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars less than the consultant had anticipated, so we were actually relieved to see it. So the recommendation is that council award the contract with the city project two thousand sixteen dash zero one A Suk Road, Machosen Road, Veterans Memorial Parkway Sewers Project to C one Contracting Limited in the amount of one million fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars, and authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to sign the contract with C one for this project. Thank you.
Second?
And Counsel Logan for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Through you to the Director of Engineering. So we release, we relax the timeline. So did they give any indication when they're going to start?
Their indication is that they will start in November and complete in June.
Oh, this year?
That's, that's a long timeline for this work, and I, I would suggest that they've given themselves leeway to start later than November in that timeline. But the timelines submitted by others were no better, except up at the very higher end of the bidding.
As long as we're not looking at twenty twenty as being that liberal, then I'm pretty skookum.
Anyone else?
Uh, sorry. Sorry, not, just not understanding contracts very well. How, how does this number lock us in versus overruns and all that kind of stuff? How does that normally operate?
An overrun that's our fault, for example, would be finding rock where rock is not allowed for in the contract. But there are unit prices in the contract for that eventuality, and the contingencies are built partly with an eye to the likelihood of those things happening. You know, it's a Donald Rumsfeld situation, and you can try, there are knowns, there are unknowns, and there are unknown unknowns. Something like that.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving then, next item. Finance and Administration, seven point four point one, Recommendation City of Callwood and School District sixty-two Draft Agreement for Emergency Use of Facilities. Admin going to take this one?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. This is just a follow-up on something that the emergency program coordinator has actually been working on for the last eighteen months, and that's to get an emergency use of facilities agreement in place with School District sixty-two. So this is very similar in nature to what we have with Church of the Advent, Callwood Pentecostal, and Waukuk Recreation Center. It's a really welcome agreement to have, and includes pretty much facilities, equipments, grounds, everything the school has to offer, of course, working with the school district. So our hope is that council will support entering into this agreement with the school district and the, excuse me for a moment, the committee, excuse me, the Emergency Planning Committee talked about the agreement and also recommended to council that the emergency use of facilities agreement between the City of Callwood and the Board of School Trustees of School District Number sixty-two Suk be approved, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Secondor, please? Seconder, please? Any discussion, comments? I just want to say thank you for this, because I think that with this agreement in place, it gives us another note of, of option that doesn't, you know, helps us to facilitate the other far reach of our, our community. So I think it's a good, good spot to have picked, and that works out well. Anybody else? All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? A recommendation on the dairy building status update, seven point four point two. Dairy building?
Thank you, through your worship. So one of the missions of the Heritage Commission is to protect the integrity of the Callwood Dairy Building. As many of you know, it is one of the oldest buildings in Callwood and carries the historical significance. Although the commission would preferably like it not to be moved, we are certainly lucky that these properties have been able to come together, and that the Callwood Dairy Farm can be located at four seven six Goldstream in a dedicated Heritage Park. Also, the Heritage Commission is looking to continue dialogue on how the building can continue to be, or for possible community use. And so I would move the recommendation from the Heritage Commission that the Callwood Dairy Farm be retained on-site, which is within the boundaries of the revised location at four seven six Goldstream Avenue, and that staff work with the developers to enhance the historic value. And that staff bring possible options back to a future Heritage Commission meeting regarding possible community use of the building.
Any discussion? In the basement? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And finally, in finance, we have a memo regarding Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Community Leaders. You'll remember, counsel, at our previous meeting, we were tasked with coming up with some recommendations for the Canada one fifty event being planned for next year. So we have a name from the community that's been brought forward, and, and I'd like to suggest Scott McDonald be that appointed community person, and we need somebody from council. I'm not sure, did we land on somebody last time? I can't remember.
I nominate Lohha. Rah rah rah. Yeah, come on. I'll say, I'll say, seconder nomination.
What's that? I think that it, what it said is we can have up to three, and they were looking for council, community, and a community organization. And we didn't hear from community organization. Sandra's not here, but...
I think Marcy should also do it. We should put Marcy's name forward as well.
Okay, so we have three names, Scott McDonald from our community, Marcy on staff, and Counselor Chung. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
I've never known Rob to be so convincing.
All righty, moving on to bylaws, folks. I'm looking for first, second, and third readings on exempt certain land and improvements from taxation for a ten-year period beginning fiscal twenty-eleven. Bylaw number one three five nine twenty-ten, Amendment Number Four. We are looking, as I said, first, second, and third.
Moving. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
The second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one three five nine for information? It says here on my... Okay, all right, so it's just adding to it. Bylaw number, or the eight point two and eight point three have been moved to next meeting. Eight point four, bylaw number one six five three, again, first, second, and third readings for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw. Bylaw number five nine eight, two thousand and one, Amendment Number Fifty-one.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Eight point five, bylaw number one six two, one six two six, third reading only.
The third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one six two seven, final reading?
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one six five five, first, second readings only.
Move introduction?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one five five three, final reading?
Move final.
Sorry, second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one five five four, final reading? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one five eight four, final reading?
Move final.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Bylaw number one six five zero, first and second readings only?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
The second.
Second, second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Folks, that concludes our meeting for this evening.
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thanks, folks.